Guys, you remember that exam that I told you last night? That I was really stressed? That I didn't trust myself about? That like... Like I said, I was really stressed and I did not trust myself about because I was just like... I don't understand everything, I'm wrong, I don't know, look at that. 80% 80% That's an A right here. 80% What's up guys, welcome or welcome back to my channel. If you're new here, welcome, my name is Shafa. I'm a current law student. I'm a lash tech, a wig stylist and a makeup artist. If you're not new here, you already know the vibe. So, this video is supposed to be a week of... A week in my life of uni, because your girl got accepted in uni. It's not my first week, my first week has been really like anxious for me. My anxiety went all the way up, so I couldn't film anything. But we're gonna film the second week, this is my second week at uni. I have online class today, everything is set up on my bed. My bed is a mess because I've been doing homeworks and catching up on everything. So yeah, like I said, today is Monday and we're beginning the week in my life, so yeah. Hi guys, so today is Tuesday and my class is about to start soon. And I went ahead and looked the PowerPoint for today and I started taking my notes on the PowerPoint and y'all. Yeah, I'm pretty advanced, because you know, I missed a week of school, well, two weeks of school, so I have to be advanced. For me, being advanced is better than being like pretty late. So I'm about to go to class, um, and yeah. Hey guys, I am still in class right now. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I ain't gonna lie, I'm lost, like really lost. I don't understand anything in any of my five classes, okay? So, what we're going to do today is shower. Right, well, I have an exam in like 10 minutes at 8:25. I have an exam in this class, we're just waiting for time to pass. And then after that, you know what I'm gonna do tonight? I don't think I'm going to sleep. Tonight, I think I'm just gonna go review everything in every single class. And then just like try to understand, like read everything, take notes of what I understand and try to understand what I've missed, the two last weeks that, the two weeks that I missed. And then just like be focused and be there on the same level as everyone in each of my classes. Because like, I feel like the fact that I'm late, I was, I got in school late. I'm lost, so I know it's the beginning of the semester, I shouldn't be like so negative right now because it's the beginning of the semester. But I hate being lost, I hate when I don't understand stuff. And I feel like if I was there from day one, maybe I could have understood the way the teachers work and then what we're gonna talk about and what's the point of the classes and everything. So what I'm gonna do is just, just read everything and then try to understand everything. Because you know, each classes, they have like a, a plan, like the class plan that explains everything with the classes about, the quizzes, the exams, the homeworks, everything. So I'm just gonna start with that, I'm gonna start there and I'm gonna start reading every single like chapters because they don't give us like two, three pages, they give us like chapters to read, so... I don't think I'm gonna sleep tonight, but if that's what I have to do to understand every single thing, I'm gonna do it. So yeah, we're gonna go shower after my exam. Let's cross our fingers that at least I understand what the teacher was talking about today because the quiz is about what he was talking about today. So let's just hope that I understood what he was saying and that I will pass this quiz. Because this quiz is like 10% of my semester. So, 10%? It might be little, but at the end, you're gonna want that 10%, okay? You might need that 10%. So, I just wanna make sure that every 10% I just go all the way, in every exam, I go all the way. So, yeah, that's kind of it guys. Guys... I don't know if y'all could see, there's still like six minutes left. We had, um, 15 minutes? There's still like six minutes left and I answered all 10 of the questions. I'mma tell you right now, my heart is shaking, okay? I had access to my notes, like I was allowed to use my notes. But I just, I don't know. We're supposed to have the results next week, so we're gonna see next week. My heart is shaking right now. I trust myself, I trust the answers that I put. It's just, you know, the fact that I was late and I don't really understand everything that they're talking about. That's what's stressing me, so maybe for me, I understood what he was saying today. Or maybe I was just out of the blue and I didn't understand shit. We're gonna see next week. So right now, like I said, we're going to shower. I'm gonna set the vibes in my room, light a candle and then put on some cute PJs and work. And I, yeah, we're gonna start everything. I'll see you guys after shower. Alright guys, so everything is set on my side of things. I made my plate, I made like a pizza with, um, beef, like barbecue beef, cheese and some pickles because I Haitian thing, I don't have the time to explain to y'all. With a bowl of fruit, cherries and oranges and a malta. Again, Haitian drink, I don't have the time to explain it to y'all. But yeah, we are ready for the study session, so let's get into it. Hi guys, I don't know if I should say good morning or good afternoon, whatever it is. It's time to get ready for school. Today is Wednesday and Wednesdays are my busiest days at school. I have like two classes and both of them were three hour classes. So I will be, I will be in school from 2:00 PM till 9:00 PM. Okay, so we're about to get ready, so let's get ready, what you think? Okay, I just got out the shower. I got dressed because I have to film this video for TikTok, so we're just gonna get ready, alright? Hi guys, so right now it's 5 o'clock. I have an hour break, I just finished my first three hour class. Let me give y'all some light because, oh, there you go. So yeah, I just finished my first three hour class and I have an hour break because my next class is at 6 o'clock until 9:00 PM. So, you know, the anti-social person that I am, I ain't got no friends. While school just started, well, you guys are supposed to say, "Shafa, shut up", okay? Because y'all know, for the people who's been here from day one, y'all know that I'm anti-social and that I don't make friends that easily. So, it can happen though in my school, but it's not gonna happen like from me. Like if someone comes and talks to me, okay, I might be open to it, but me going to that person is... Yeah, so, me telling you guys, it's just the beginning of semes... No, I'm, yeah, don't believe me, I'm not gonna talk to anybody. Like, we have teamwork! I don't even go talk to them people, I just, I would rather do my fucking work by myself than go talk to somebody. But I have to do a teamwork and luckily for me, I don't have to choose my partner. My teachers chooses, they choose, um, with who I'm going to work with. So this is not really a problem, I don't mind, it's okay for me. But, um, yeah, I'm gonna stay in my car for the hour break because I usually just stay in the class, like the next class that I have. I usually just get in the class and just wait until it starts. But there's like students in the class, I think they had a class today. So I'm just gonna wait until like 5:30-ish and then I'm gonna go back inside. I just wanted to update y'all, like you saw, I was in my class, my first class and... Honestly, remember last night, I was telling y'all that, um, I felt lost, that I didn't really understand and everything? I think that was just because it was my first week in the classes. But now, I feel like I can't understand, like today, I was impressed today, I was asking questions, I was deep in the class, you know? So I was like, okay, yeah, you really just needed to read and then just needed to be on the same level as everybody to just like understand what they're saying and what they're talking about, you know? So, tonight, we're gonna do it again, okay? We're gonna do the other classes because I only did the two classes that I had today just to catch up because it was like the closest classes. So tomorrow, tonight, we're gonna do the class, I have one class tomorrow, so tomorrow, we're gonna, tonight, we're gonna do the class that I have tomorrow and the others. So, yeah, I feel like, you know, it's the beginning of the semester and I felt lost. Maybe it was because I missed like two classes in each of my classes. So it was like, okay, yeah, everybody knows something, everybody's already talking about something that I don't know about. So, now that I've catched up on the class that I had today, I was like, shit, now I understand every single thing the teacher's saying, I understand, like I ask questions, I understand what I have to do. So yeah, um, I'm gonna wait in my car a little bit, get the heat and then after that, um, we're gonna go to our next class and for up to three hours. So, wish me luck, I hope I'm going to understand that class because I think I will, I trust. I'm going to trust the process, okay? And I'll tell you guys how it went after, after class, by like 9:00 PM, so... Guys, you remember that exam that I told you last night? That I was really stressed, that I didn't trust myself about? That like, like I said, was really stressed and I did not trust myself about because I was just like, I don't understand everything, I'm lost, I don't know. Look at that. 80% 80% 80% That's an A right here. AD per... Bro. Bro. That's an A right there, like, that's an A. Like if I look, um, on the class plan, on how he like grades everyone, that's an A right there. Like 80% to 90 or to, 80% to 90, it's A. And then just 90 to 100, it's A+. That's an A right fucking there, like... I need to start trusting myself more because I wasn't trusting myself about this. And then, he just sent the email like, "I got your notes, dah 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 dah". I was stressed, just for looking at the notes, I was stressed. And then I was, I looked at it, I saw 80 freaking percent. I was like, "Shafa, quit playing with yourself." Quit fucking playing with yourself, like, really. Like, bro. I ain't gonna say too much, I'm, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop. Like, I don't, I don't even understand where that doubt is coming from. Because usually, when it comes to school, I don't doubt myself because I know myself, I know. I don't even, I think maybe the fact that I started later than everybody, that's why it played in my mind, but now... Doubt, you're going away, like, I need to stop playing with myself. Like, I need to remember who the F I am when it comes to school, when it comes to law school. Like, bitch, remember who the F you are, like, what the heck? Bro, guys, did you just hear what I said? Last night, I was stressing about the exam. I was stressing about the fucking exam. And look at that, AD per cent. Girl, play with somebody else. Good morning, guys, today is Thursday. It's 8 o'clock, 8 something and it's time for me to get dressed to go to school. I'm so tired, I've been up to try to catch up on my class that I have today. So I didn't really sleep much, you see the bags under my eyes? Yeah, so yeah, let's just get dressed and get ready for school, alright? Baby, I love myself, I don't know. Leave me here, I'll fuck myself. Sit in the mirror, I duck myself. Don't need muscle, fuck my wealth. Hi guys, so I am finally done with school, today is actually my, my last day of class. I have classes, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, Fridays, I don't have classes, so this is a good thing cuz that way I could just like get rest and then just do homeworks, do everything that I've missed and, yeah, so I'm going home. And then after that, at three, I have to work, I have to go to the group home, so, yeah, let's go home, okay? Hi guys, so I just got back home from work, I'm really, really, really tired. Um, I think I'm just gonna relax for now and then just go to bed and then tomorrow morning, when I wake up before I go to work, I'll just like start some homework and everything. So I'm going to end this vlog here cuz this vlog was like a week in my life as a law student, like a week of school. And I don't have school tomorrow, I don't have class tomorrow, so I'm going to end this vlog here and then start editing. Thank you so much for watching this video today, if you're new here, don't forget to click on that subscribe button and don't forget to like, comment and subscribe if you're not, if you're not new here. You already know everything that's going on, you already know what to do. Comment if you have anything that you want me to talk about or any kind of videos you want me to do. And again, thank you again for the love and the support and I'll see you guys on the next one, much love.